All right, it's seven o'clock, so we can call the meeting to order and do roll call when you're ready.
Markle.
Here.
Evans.
Here.
Kettering.
Here.
Michael.
Here.
Schultz.
Here.
Weiss.
Here.
Hoffman.
Here.
All right, everybody had a chance to look at the minutes from the previous meeting. If there's no amendments or anything, then I would need a motion to approve the minutes from the previous meeting.
I'll second it.
Motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Right. Are there any items to be added to the agenda?
Yeah, I'd like to request after the public comment to add an update to the RT zones real quick that we're gonna start looking at next month, so.
All right, is, I guess if everybody's in favor of update, or adding the update to RT zoning, we need a motion for that, no? All right.
So we'll.
I'll second it.
I have a motion in a second to amend the agenda.
Who made the motion?
Done. All in favor?
Aye.
I'm opposed. All right, we will add the update to the end of the meeting. Since we've got the addition, can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
Kettering.
All right, motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, conflict of interest declarations, we can start with Kathy.
No.
Dennis Michael, no? Chris Barkle, no?
Don Kettering, no.
Sherry Hoffman, no.
Matt Evans, no.
Christie Schultz, no.
Right. And as usual, we got a few minutes to kill before the first agenda item at seven oh five.
Could we talk about the rural transitional update during that time?
Sure.
Yeah, I think we could go ahead and move it to front then.
So basically, you know, a few months back, we had talked about looking at trying to convert some of the rural transitional zones to to a permanent zone, and we got eleven applications in, about half of them are pretty good sized acreages that want to go to R2. So, so the commission last week acknowledged those eleven applications, and so we're gonna start moving them through the formal process next month and see what y'all think, but, but I think they all make sense. Like I said, a lot of big chunks that are looking to break them up and somewhere down the line, nobody seemed to be in an immediate hurry, but somewhere down the line breaking them up into R2, and, and then there was a few that, like a commercial lot that didn't have the parking lot as commercial, so they're changing that. There was one house on Deer Boulevard, it's kind of by itself, but it asked to be R2 also, it just kind of made sense. There was one, the only one that was really in question, there was one that was looking to convert their seventy acres to a egg next to the RV park area down there off Deer Boulevard in Elphons, so, so, but we'll talk about them next month.
Great, thanks.
Gary, will you send out anything preliminary on that, so we kind of?
Yeah, you'll get the whole packet that has all the graphics and everything that was prepared for commission last week, so it shows the locations, it shows what they want to, what they want to switch to and all that information, so.
Gary, while you're up there, why don't you just tell everybody about the update on the comprehensive plan?
On whose?
On the comprehensive plan.
Oh, yeah, so also, we talked to District Three a couple, or a week and a half ago or so, and, and they plan on having that ready by about Thanksgiving time, hopefully, they said, so then we'll start working on that too, probably next month. Don and I will be working on trying to condense that down some to where maybe we have an executive summary of that also, but, but for now, they got, they're just getting all the updated numbers in there and things, so, so we're looking forward to getting that off our plate too, so we'll, we'll start talking about that next month also, hopefully.
Thank you.
Thanks, Gary. All right, it's seven oh five, so we can start with Daniel Subotka conditional use permit applicant is requesting a conditional use permit for outdoor storage in a lakeside commercial district per Article 11, Section 1107, said property is legally described as Lot 17, Whitetail Run in the northeast quarter of the southeast quarter of Section 16, T93 North, R56 West of the 5th PM, Yankton County, South Dakota. Is Daniel or anybody here to tweak, come on up?
So this is my first show at doing this, so inexperience will come out, so I guess I'm, I'm more here to, I guess, say, we're gonna try to take Lot 17 and turn it into outdoor storage. Probably slots for like boats or campers are what our number one priority would be, so looking at leveling, the lots fairly level already, but trying to work with the natural drainage that we would have out there. We're located pretty close to the property that Jeff Fairbough purchased north of us, we've discussed the natural drainage there, and we're all kind of in agreeance that it needs to go towards Buck Avenue, which would be, I guess, about the only liability I see on the property is the water that's gonna have to exit it sooner or later. Just plan on making it as flat as possible drainage and, you know, rock or graveling it, and our plan is to gate it and fence it, if in this world of not being able to get stuff, we can actually get that stuff. So, you know, we've been in the process of approaching that, we haven't went into getting real deep into it until we know our permit is gonna let us go in that direction.
Okay. Um. Could you show us on the map exactly where it's at, I guess, from the picture in the packet, it's a little bit hard to tell, if you could zoom in on it, Bill?
Yeah. You can do what you want. It's zoomed in on the application, so it didn't really show well, but you're right here, right?
Yes.
So there's a new street.
Right.
Jonah that comes, Jonah or Jonas?
Jonas.
Comes right down here off of Buck, so he'd be this property, right? You've got Peterson's campground, right?
And the drainage is gonna go to the north?
Right along, it'll go to, to Buck Avenue. It will drain on the developed stuff that's to the right there, Bill, right along those yellow lines is where the, the actual looks like to me the natural waterway right now.
The plan actually, the current plan for that subdivision actually has a drainage plan, it kind of heralds where everything runs.
And it does go that way, um, I actually dug that road, I built that road, Jonas, it drains plenty, it's like six inches in a matter of three hundred feet, something like that, so there's plenty of drains that go straight to Buck on that, and then Buck does drain straight to Deer Boulevard.
So anyway, like I say, just working with the guys out there next to us to make sure, you know, our goal is not to to try to push water anywhere it shouldn't go, just knowing that if we get a five inch rain, which I've experienced up here, it's gotta go somewhere, so. I've spoken with Jason Sudback out there too, who is right there to the east of us, and, you know, he's all for it too, because the drainage is in a proper location, I see that as the number one issue, I, we're from down by O'Neill, Nebraska, Inman and Water's a major issue there, there's been wars about that for years, so, but that would be the, the big thing that I see at this point.
Right, um, so the ingress and egress to the property would be from the west side of the property?
Yes, on that Jonas.
Buck comes across here, Jonas comes roughly here.
So we would have to, yes, head towards the south and.
And the fencing you're looking at doing is just typical chain link fence?
That's what we're working at right now, yes, is to try to get some quotes on like six foot chain link.
Are you planning on putting in the like the screening into it, or is it just gonna be?
Just chain link at this point, in visiting, Jeff owns both the one acre plots to the north of me along Buck, and in visiting with him, he is fine with, I don't know what his plans are yet, but he is fine with a six foot chain link fence. Our plan is not to put the barbed wire on top, so we look like prison compound, I don't really want to do that if I don't have to, and I think in that area out there, we probably won't have that much of an issue.
Well, if you leave it open chain link, you know, without the slats.
Yes.
There's no place for burglars to hide.
This is true. There, there's been a couple of theories on complexes that we have built down in Nebraska, is you could put a lot of lights out, so you can see the burglar, or you can put no lights and they can't see what you have, so, you know, it's kind of a toss up at that point, so I, no, our plan is not to put the slot in there right now.
And bringing that up, are you gonna have lighting on the property?
You know, I, I've kicked it around, I think it would be nice for people coming in late at night, the big thing will be is working with like Matt and Aaron Peterson out there to make sure that our lighting doesn't affect their campgrounds. You know, I don't want to become an issue with it either, and so more than willing to put some area lighting up or whatever for, but it's gonna have to be pretty subtle to not bother the campgrounds around it.
So how many acres is this?
Downcast lighting.
What's that?
You would want downcast.
Very, very much so, yes, and so. Yes.
I have a plan on the year if somebody wants to look at it.
So on the five point seven, how many more of these are you planning on?
One point seven.
One point seven, one point seven.
Yeah.
And then that's it, then, there's no future developments on your property?
Not that I'm aware, I'm, I'm seeing anyway, so.
It's just outdoor storage and no buildings?
No buildings. Originally, there was a building plan, but I originally also had hoped that I could put some permanent camping pads in there, and became aware of the fact that there's not enough acres there to do it, so we didn't even try. I, it's a waste of everybody's time, so we backed clear out of that and said, okay, we, no building, we'll just go outdoor storage, it looks like it's something that would work well in that area with all the campgrounds. So, that, that's one of the reasons.
And how are you gonna control access?
It'll be gated, right now, the, the proposal or the quote that we have in is electronic. If, if that, that's our goal or what we wish for, we've rented storage lots up here before, and they were all the way from locker locks to you name it, and that's kind of a pain, so we do wish to, to do better than that, so we're hoping for an electric gate with a keypad. Otherwise, we have no way to really decide who's in and out very much at all. We rent space from Ron down the road, I'd like his setup, he's got a good security system, he's got good gating system and a whole bit, so. I guess I have a question on that end of it, maybe you guys, Bill has been very helpful and given me advice too, but if this permit was to go through, we get leveled, we get rock, and my fence company says, yeah, we could put that in in twenty twenty four for you, because we'll be able to get it by then, whatever the restriction's gonna be to start using that property before the fencing would be done, because in our world right now, we're in contracting, and we've got product that's forty weeks out, we've got, you know, it's just hard to get certain items, I don't know if this is gonna be true or not, but. So I, I would guess it's just a question to say, how would you handle that? If we get money invested in leveling and rock and everything else, are we gonna be held to not being able to put anything in there until we would were to put the fence up completely?
Gary?
So that, that obviously would be a condition by the board here, and how long you want to give them to do that? Yeah, two years might be a little tough generally. Generally, most of the time, I think the late, as long as they've went, is maybe a year, but they try and get things up, but we do know that everything's slow right now, like you said, and, and everything seems to be taken twice as long as as it was, but I don't know if there's any way you could do a temporary fence of some other kind until the electronic one comes, or? Yeah. Yeah, no, I understand, and.
But no.
You know.
Sioux Falls is saying maybe mid-summer.
Yeah.
And so, you know, if I was gonna go in and, let's just be out and transparent, I want to get this thing rolling in May, so we can start turning some revenue off, but is, you know, that fencing gonna stop me from being able to start advertising and trying to rent spaces?
Well, it wouldn't be something that would stop your advertising, is, it's whatever condition they make on the timeline.
What about your insurance?
We haven't pushed that yet, because we're still in this exploration stage. I guess I, the, sorry, the, the little bit that I've been involved in planning and zoning and stuff is through, you know, projects we've done.
And I haven't jumped in feet first yet, waiting for you to say, yes, this can be outside storage, because it doesn't do me any good to move forward if, if that falls in the heap, I guess, is what I'm trying to say. So if the permitting looks like it's gonna go, then I can dig deeper into it and, and try to move forward from there, which would be, like you said, yes, insurance, and I have spoken with our insurance agent in Nebraska who sells here too, and they're more than willing to do it anytime that we're ready to do it.
I would think that from a, a person that was looking for a place to store their boat or their camper, or whatever they were looking, that, you know, the fence would be a priority to them, and of course, insurance of some sort would be a priority, but also understanding that you can't just walk into Menards and buy the fence. I mean, and we don't know when that might be that you can do that, so, so there's gotta be some give and take there, but then it also, you know, like from your standpoint of advertising to, to get customers to, you know, lease space or whatever to, to store that camper, they're gonna want some protection of, you know, okay, so who's not gonna come steal the wheels off my camper while it's there, you know?
Cameras.
Well, and we're, like I say, I'm hopeful that this can all happen in April or May, but I'm not gonna go out and commit thirty thousand dollars for fence and then have the inability to turn it into outdoor storage, so, you know, I can't get on somebody's list yet until I'm pretty certain I can move forward with some certainty. And so it's, I don't, I've got a conservative streak in me, I guess, but, so I'm not gonna, you know, sign a contract with somebody to put it in until I know, yes, we can do this. But the gentleman in Sioux Falls did state that it was gonna be at least April or May if we spoke up two months ago.
Go ahead, Gary. You remember, you remember about a year, year and a half ago, we had an issue out on the highway out there that they had trespassers that would go and sit in the boats and everything else at night, that was next to a bar, but, but that, they were forced to put in a fence too for the same reasons, and yeah, I'm sure that, I'm sure that's gonna be a concern for the people that would store something there.
So, how does this differ than a CAFO where they get approved and then they, they don't get started building in a year?
Yeah, after the year that CUP can go away.
So, so.
Well, he already said that, he's, he's already said he's gonna be doing the dirt work and laying the, the.
But that, the dirt work, the dirt work doesn't count.
No, we don't permit dirt.
They don't permit dirt, they have to have foundations poured for the CAFOs, they gotta.
Right, but we're not talking apples and, and oranges.
We're talking the, the rules, and that's what I'm trying to clarify, what's.
So they usually have six months on a building permit, and if we're allowed to give them, you know, up to a year if we feel that that is necessary. But we're not talking about the same type of building, I mean, once he gets his fence, it's gonna be up in a matter of a couple weeks outside.
Yeah, there's no building permit in this entire project.
Yeah, so.
Yeah, so it's kind of a move.
It's more just a condition of.
Right. Of the use.
Is there rules, Gary, on time limit to start anything for a conditional use? They just have to start something?
Yeah.
So would their work be? What if there's no permanent structures within that, then?
No, that's, that's why I was saying.
Well, yeah, and, because there, there truly is, that's the most permanent structure out there.
Condition would be that they get their fence up within the year.
Okay.
It's a struggle, it sounds like. Hopefully they can get, they can get shit defense up. Yeah, so getting a, if she wanted to play fence up, that sort of purpose.
Oh, I.
It's lawful company, you're using that does that.
Right, and I, I only, it's not a major deal, but I just know how the world is turning right now, and if we don't look at it in the real world, I could say, I'll have this done by April one.
I just, I just wanna treat everybody equal.
Yep, no, I, I don't have a problem with that, but I don't, you know, my goal is, is I need, or I want to generate revenue just like everybody else out there, and my hot time will be from May one on that we need to try to fill that. So we're gonna start to work as soon as we know this permit is gonna go through, and we're not doing work on something that's never gonna happen, so. That, I, that's the only concern, I'm, I don't have any problems with you saying, you know, we're treating everybody equal, I gotta, we know we need to fence it, I throw the caution out, I'm a contractor, I know what you can and can't get in this world, and it's not getting better right now. So I just wanted to make sure that was out in front of everybody, because if it is gonna keep us from being able to utilize the property, even if it's level and rocked and the entrances in, I, I need to know that in my planning.
So how about trees and those kind of things, is there any of that?
The only thing I can see past the fencing would be some lighting. I don't, I don't foresee us doing anything else other than that becoming a storage lot at this point.
I think that's a back for a permit, but change.
Yeah, so. And I guess that's my only concern is, is the fencing issue, you know, if I go out there and I jump on somebody's bandwagon and they say, yeah, we'll see you on August thirtieth of next year, that means I lose a whole season if we don't have an agreement here to go ahead and start utilizing it, even if people were willing to come with a temporary fence there.
I appreciate your honesty.
No, I, I, hey, it's the only world I can live in. I, I'm pretty transparent.
Wouldn't say that.
And, and I'm, it, it's just, I purchased the land because I, I, we enjoy being in South Dakota, we have sold part of our business in Nebraska, looked like a great opportunity, and we know Jeff really well, we've met Matt, we like the area, and this is where we think we could generate a little revenue and still have a little slice of South Dakota.
Well, even if you can't get your permanent fence in, you can put up temporary fence and security cameras. Have an electronic fence, kind of.
But anyway, I'm willing to work any direction, I just, like, like I say, I, I could have just let this whole thing go, but sooner or later it'll bite us all, so we just will know right up front. That is my one concern, and I will dig much deeper into it once I have some confidence that the permit is gonna allow me to do storage.
All right, is there any other questions for Dan from the board? All right, thanks, Dan.
Thank you, appreciate your time.
Yep, is there anybody else from the public that wish to speak on this conditional use permit? Seeing none, more discussion by the board?
So I'd like to touch base on the, on the fence a little bit. So, it really varies as far as what I've seen at the county level approval, as far as what's been done for timeframes, as far as fences, I've seen one year, me, myself, I did tell them on my last one, I didn't know how soon I would even start work at the park, so they told me that from the time my first customer pulls in, I have one year from that time, because there's no structures on my property, so they said, from that time that that person pulls in, I have one year to put up a fence, there were other conditional use permits that I've seen go up to four years to put up a fence, one was three years and one was four years, I think it all varies.
Did you see that in Yankton County though?
In Yankton County, if you want, I can say which ones they were.
I think the difference there is, though, there's, there's a lot of difference between a locked in storage place compared to an RV park.
I agree.
Right.
I just didn't know if it, within our ordinance, if it specified the difference between the two, I guess, I don't know if other, has there been a recent place that does boat storage that we've done?
I don't remember any recent ones, but I think the difference though is that the primary use of the property is to be a storage facility that's secure and locked up, so that is the primary building activity and everything that's going on there is that basically the fencing. So, I guess I would think that we'd stick with Gary's recommendation of year maximum. Can you get that done? Would we, Gary, would we set that, if we did a year, would we set that from the date that their conditional use is?
Your recommendation would be a condition of one year to get the fence.
A year from approval?
Yeah.
Could that be amended though to kind of a little bit what, what Matt said about making it a year from the day that they can actually park something there?
You can certainly make that recommendation.
I mean, well, but. The, the problem, the problem with what's happened and a lot of other things where we, we have the hundred and eighty day limit or whatever the limit is on things, there's always circumstances that we all have no control over, and so you go into a really wet rainy spring and you can't even excavate and build the lot, and then, you know, your, the time bomb is ticking on your fence, but you still, you can't get in there to move the dirt either, so.
Yeah.
I, I kind of like the idea of from the day that, you know, someone were as accessible to be used instead of from the day that the permit is approved.
Well, one of the things that I also dealt with in my previous permit before my last one, so I was approved in February, and they gave me one year to put in a fence from there, while the park wasn't even built yet, and you have to build the park, and I understand this is completely different, but. And I understand this is completely different, but um I had one year. Well, technically I didn't have one year. Because I had to wait for the frost to come out and then I had to build. And then now I'm trying to put up the fence now before the frost comes in, say, December, January. So really I only have. Six months to put it in.
So that, I'm gonna ask you a question. How is it?
What's that?
This request versus your request? You said you understand that it's different. To me, it's the same thing. People are requesting. Permits to build something and the one case we're, we're gonna say. You got forever almost. In the other case, we're saying you have max of one year.
Um, are you saying like, uh, like an RV park compared to his, whether it's a conditional use permit? I honestly think they're the same personally. I, I believe an RV park is just dirt and I believe that those people wanna be secure. I believe that there's neighbors around my RV park. There ain't no way I'm building that RV park without a fence, you know? And some RV parks were given three years, like I said, and then. On one, I was given one year. On the next one, I was given one year from the time I started. Um, so say this does get approved for him next month and we give him a year. He has from April of next year till, uh, say November or whatever to put it in. And if he doesn't get it in by then, there's gonna be frost in the ground and he won't be able to get it in. That was just kind of the point that I was trying to make, I guess. It's really the timing of it also, like of when you get approved. Are you okay with a year from the, the um, the commission being? Approved, say you do get approved next month, are you okay with one year from, say, December, whatever that is?
And I think the, I think the two things being discussed here are a little bit different. I think that he's concerned mostly if, if it's okay if he can have customers there prior to a fence, which. I think that's kind of his concern and that doesn't really concern us. So if he wants to deal with that with his customers or insurance or whatever issues, that doesn't concern us. He can have customers there. Our issue is. As a condition of. This use here is that we want a fence there in a year. What he does with it. Like up to then, that doesn't matter.
If you wanted to be flexible due to supply chain issues, you could give him eighteen months. From the date it's approved next month. That will overlap the winter. You know, we all live in a place where we have winter. And the frost goes into the ground. That's, that's a given in whatever building project you do. That's kind of the nature of the beast of where we live. But, you know, everybody knows that there's supply chain issues. And it could be a while before these things are solved. So if you wanna give him a little bit of leeway, you could give him eighteen months.
Gary, is that in, that we can actually do eighteen months or is it at a year?
But that's for billing permits, correct? Not for fencing?
That's unconditional.
That's for the permit, though. We're just stipulating that on the fencing. We can put conditions on the permit.
Right, that's the conditional use issue.
You know, we're not saying he shouldn't build anything in eighteen months. We're just giving him leeway on the fence alone.
So I guess I'm confused. I guess I'm confused on, on that part. Like what has to start on a CUP in order before it goes away?
That's the.
Because literally it's just a fence.
Well, yeah, the only permanent structure is a fence. Dirt work doesn't take.
Is open storage without the fence and that's.
So how many uh units can they put in this fenced in area?
Depends on the size.
So they wanna have them side by side packed in?
Well, actually, that has to be according to the CUP plan, right? Which is seventy. Yeah, he's got a plan in there and he can't have more than that amount according to CUP plan, correct? Yep, so if it alters from that plan, he needs to come back, correct? Yep.
So there's how many? Seventy-five?
Those roads are thirty feet wide in between? Yeah, that's, that's pretty good.
Yeah, and you've, you've modified the plan. He actually had a few more uh pads in here. But he decided to be easier to take a few out and leave room for the, for them to move around, so.
And that's already naturally kind of a drainage ditch. It's already low there, right?
Alright, so I guess, um, basically if he start, my, my understanding is if he starts using the property as a storage facility. Within a year, he's met the conditional use requirements, we can recommend. Virtually any timeframe we see reasonable for the fence to be completed.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to approve the request for a outdoor storage unit. For the storage facility and um. As per regulations, the CUP, the, the actual use of the ground as a storage unit will be within the year. And that he'd be allowed an extra six months or eighteen months to install a, a fence around said. Storage unit due to supply chain issues due to COVID nineteen.
Second.
Right, I have a motion and a second.
Just to clarify, what I think.
That's only the fence.
Only the vents for the.
Only the fence.
Eighteen months, six months additional.
Six months additional, eighteen months total.
Eight months, eighteen months total.
Okay.
Would it be clear if we took the six months, extra six months out and just said eighteen months?
Eighteen months from approval?
Just eighteen months from approval at the.
That would eliminate a lot of confusion, I think.
Yes, and I just wanna add one more thing, just a um technical issue. Now, Utica Township should be added to the legal on both of these permits. I don't see it on there.
It's ninety-three, Township ninety-three.
They usually say new uh township, but.
I can put those on from now on.
Alright, so I've got a motion and a second. Is there any more discussion by the board or are we ready for a vote? Alright, roll call vote when you're ready.
Barkle.
Yes.
Evans.
Yes.
Kettering.
Yes.
Michael.
Yeah.
Schultz.
Yes.
Weiss.
Yes.
Hoffman.
Yes.
Alright, motion pass.
Thank you, sir.
Alright, next agenda item. James Denherter, conditional use permit applicant is requesting conditional use permit for a self-storage facility in a lake site commercial district. Per Article eleven, section eleven oh seven. Said property is legally described as lot four, Whitetail Run in the northeast quarter and southeast quarter. Uh, section sixteen, T ninety-three north, R fifty-six west of the fifth PM, Yankton County, South Dakota. Is James here to speak on this issue? Come on up.
So it starts, it starts lot five right behind the yellow lines. And then lot four is kind of where his arrow is right there running.
Alright, can you tell us a little bit about your project?
So what I'm after is uh putting up a storage unit. Um, you have a plan in front of you. And uh Morton Buildings has priced out the building for me. The building is forty-two feet wide and two hundred and fifty-two feet long. I'll be eighteen stalls or eighteen bays. With potential uh later on. At some point uh down the road that we would add a second structure. That would, we'll, we'll hit that one. Time comes fifty-three to five years, whatever that looks like. So, right now, right now, I'm just asking for the conditioning use permit. Build and install that though. Um, looking at, uh, we did a ten thirty-one uh land exchange. Or we're waiting for a ten thirty-one land exchange uh in Iowa. And so we uh will know that April nine. Um, so we have a card a little bit in front of the horse because I'm not able to buy the lot, the lot, the lot. Um, so Neil Anthony, the purchase agreement, Neil Anthony is actually the owner of the lot right now. Um, the conditional use permit for the, the ten thirty-one will pay him at that point. Um, and then, and then at that point, the building will be ordered and that will be operational hopefully before the snow flies. There do we have a hundred eighty, with our uh ten thirty-one, we have a hundred eighty days to be operational. Once the funds transferred commercially. Everything has to click along pretty nicely, but that's why we're starting this now. We didn't even have time to start this in the spring one. Or the April nine. We just wanted to get a few of these hurdles out of the way. Pretty straightforward.
So is your building going to be uh running north and south or east and west?
Uh, I'm gonna say it's running from the road back, whichever direction that would be, north, south.
And the primary access to the property be?
There is a, there is a uh road, um, gravel road. There's the mud. Mudslingers is the entrance. Um, and then we actually have a road contract uh that we have to maintain ourselves amongst the owners of lots one through five.
So there's entrance up, uh, off the highway here, Ingris Egress, Little Service Road along here. So Mudslingers, they can have dual access, but it's a forty-six foot.
Yeah.
They would come along here with an entry here.
What are the setbacks?
Uh, seventy-five feet on the front and twenty-five feet all the way around.
And you said that uh you were possibly adding a second one?
So eventually we would probably put one in.
In five?
In front of it. No, it, it, on the same lot.
Okay, and that would still meet the setbacks?
They would just mirror each other. But yeah, that could be, we, we've actually sold our residence in, in two center. So we're utilizing some of those funds to do this. The other half of our acreage is still for sale. So at that point, if it sells, we're gonna probably put up a second unit because we'll have to do a ten thirty-one exchange at that point as well.
Is there a fence or anything around it? Um, lighting?
Lighting signage.
Downcast lane?
Yep. Trees, grass.
And the lighting and the sign, I mean, everything's gonna be attached to the building or it's gonna be independent on its own?
We actually had that, you sent that two mega number.
Make that list. Any no issues from anybody that, that letters you were sent to?
Not, not that we have heard.
Let's be okay.
Well, there's already a bunch of buildings right there.
Yeah, I was just gonna say it fits with the neighborhood.
Alright, any other questions from the board for James? Thanks.
Thank you.
Is there anybody from the public that would wish to speak on this topic? Come on up and state your name for the record.
Uh, yeah, that's uh Ryan Hining, um, they have forty-two hundred dollars. One question here is about the storage units being right on the highway there in the uh, in the uh corridor. Um, because actually it's a few years back, we're, I do remember in this chambers here that uh people were told that. Those storage units had to be now offset away from the highway to keep the beauty of the corridor open. So I was just curious how that's all working in this corridor thing. Um, it didn't seem like it. It was very. I, I don't know, it didn't, I don't have the packet or anything like that. So it's like, it's really hard to see how this is going to uh work in that corridor district. Um, just in the be, the adification and I mean, we have the prime tourist area of Yankton. We don't wanna fill it full of warehouses. So that's the biggest concern is making sure that it's fits with the beauty of the uh, of the drive there.
Thank you.
Gary, it's uh consistent with the uh corridor plan?
Well, as stated, it has to meet the highway fifty-two corridor overlay requirement. So whatever those setbacks are, whatever lighting is needed, whatever signs are needed, the size of the signs. If there's landscape needed, all those things would have to be met at the building permit stage.
So Gary, I actually, I think I know what he's talking about. I, I was at that meeting also. So there was, at one point in time, they said that uh storage units could not be within. It's like three hundred feet or something like that.
The ordinance says that.
I don't know if it says that. I don't know if it says that, but at the meeting, is, is that where you're talking? Yep, I remember.
Wow.
I don't know if it ever made it in.
I'm not sure which, which one that was, but we could look into that, but, but that's not what the ordinance reads.
Yeah, it must not have went through.
It had to then a, a special condition to the property.
The three, you're, you're referring to the three that are six hundred to the south.
The Morris Brothers and the old one, ones in north that I would, they wanted to build a bright. I don't think your lot fits uh.
Yeah, the lots are only three hundreds, three hundred and fifty-six feet.
And I think. I think most of the reason why they did that um was because the distance from the bluffs to the highway. On the other side was about that. So they're basically trying to make it so nobody can do storage units. Along whole north side and the other side. Like I said, I remember hearing him say that, but I don't know if it ever got put pen to paper. When it did it, I, I haven't read that part of the ordinance, so.
Um, the storage part in the highway fifty-two corridor in our ordinance. Um, it's dealing with outdoor storage within that six hundred and fifty feet has to be screened.
Oh.
But um.
So he would.
As far as indoor storage.
Or trees or fences or something like that he would need?
Right, but this isn't outdoor storage. This is.
Oh, yeah.
A building.
Yeah.
And there is no plans to have anything parked outdoors?
I think it fits well with the neighborhood. I think it fits well with the neighborhood. And I think that people that want to store their camper and their boat, they want it to be readily accessible to the highway. You know, they want it to be close by. So it's easy access for them. So I don't see any, any homeowners that say this is going to block their view of the lake or, you know, impede their ability to enjoy the lake area. When you're talking about a homeowner, a landowner that would be right there. It's, it's pretty much in a that kind of use right now. In that neighborhood. So.
The lot behind it also is a, another RV park bordering him right behind there too. So I think it definitely fits.
So I think it fits with the neighborhood.
All right. Is there anybody else from the public that wishes to speak on this before, or just for discussion? Seeing none, then just board discussion if there's any more?
Okay. I'll make a motion to approve the permit for a storage building in a lakeside commercial district.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Is there any other comments before we take a vote? All right. Roll call vote when you're ready.
Barkle.
Yes.
Evans.
Yes.
Kettering.
Yes.
Michael.
Yeah.
Schultz.
Yes.
Weiss.
Yes.
Hoffman.
Yes.
All right. Motion pass. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. We have a plat. We have the plat of lots two, three, four, five, seven, eight, nine, and ten of Lake Forest Estates in the west half and in the south half of the southeast quarter. All in section sixteen, T ninety-three north, range fifty-six west of the fifth PM. Yankton County, South Dakota. Is there anything we need to know specific about these plaits?
Nope. Pretty standard.
I, I have a question. I guess I'm, I don't understand it totally. Generally, we get a plat. It's, they talk about the lots, you know, they're lotting it out of its measured area and like, I thought it could, wherever a plot would be, but on this one, the preface of it is a PUD.
It's already zoned PUD.
It is?
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah, this is pretty platted way back when, years ago. It's just got a couple of changes made to it.
I was just concerned that somebody was
Yeah.
plotting it with, and thinking that because I have a plotted, I can build a PUD there.
And you, you've already approved one lot in here, uh, month or two ago, lot six, I believe. So.
We're also missing lot one on the list.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's platted on there.
It's previously plotted.
Yeah. Yeah. The thing is here, they've got buyers for these lots. So they want to get these approved and then they'll finish off the rest. Everybody seems to do it backwards here. We'll sell them first and then we'll platter. So.
I'll make a motion to approve the lot, the plots.
All right. I have a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second. Uh, roll call vote when you're ready.
Barkle.
Yes.
Evans.
Yes.
Kettering.
Yes.
Michael.
Yeah.
Schultz.
Yes.
Weiss.
Yes.
Hoffman.
Yes.
All right. Let's prove. Are there any public comments? Anybody wish to speak? Seeing none, entertain a motion to adjourn.
We'll adjourn.
All in favor?
Hi.